If you would, actually, it's not the city of, it's the city of Wheat Ridge, not the city of Westminster, so I stand corrected and I also stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'd join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If the clerk would call the roll of the members, please.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Monica Duran.
Here.
And Fitzgerald.
Here.
Janice Hoppy.
Present.
Larry Matthews.
Here.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
And Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Davis is excused for the evening, she's out of town.
Thank you very much. The councilors, you have minutes for the meetings of June 11 and June 25. If there are no corrections, we will let those stand as presented, so there are no corrections. We have now public input on the first opportunity for public input on the 2019 budget process. If there's any members of the public here who would like to come forward and talk on that item, this is the time to do it. If you would, when you get to the podium, please adjust the microphone so it suits you. Give us your first and last name and an address, please.
Good evening, Council and Mayor Starker. My name is Rachel Hulteen and I live at 4690 Balsam Street. And I welcome to July, plenty hot. So I'm here this evening to just speak on behalf of the Activate 38 grant. For those of you who aren't familiar with it, Activate 38 is a three-year grant from Kaiser Permanente to improve walking and biking on 38th Avenue from Kipling to Youngfield. We're one year into the grant and we spent the first year reaching out to the community to find out what's important to them, what are issues that they face when trying to safely walk, ride a bike, and roll their wheelchairs along 38th Avenue. We did extensive outreach, we held events, we did small charrettes, and we asked people ages eight to 88, what's important to them. And from that, we learned that there are four significant things that they'd like to see improved along 38th Avenue for that stretch. Those include improved safe crossings, slow down cars, buffer cars from people, and create places that are safe for people. So from that, we did a little, we did small groups and talked about, well, what are short-term and longer-term ways of addressing those primary concerns? Those of us working on the grant understand that there's a longer-term hope for the corridor to have a complete sidewalk network and to be a safer place for everybody. While we work on that longer-term vision, there are shorter-term and midterm low-cost improvements that can really enhance safety. That corridor is particularly dangerous because there are no alternative routes, especially if you're traveling east-west. It's also a corridor that has a lot of people who depend on public transit. I did an inventory, there are 18 bus stops along that corridor, and only two of those bus stops have sidewalks that connect with the two closest corners. There's also a sort of bike lane that services the corridors, and I brought, this is from my garden, this is a yellow crook neck squash, and this is also the size of the bike lane for certain stretches of that corridor, which is not safe for a bike or my squash. So the, we have two more years on this grant and we're working on the longer-term vision, but in 2019, we're looking forward to working with the city on a couple of improvements and investments on the corridor that can improve safety today while we work on that longer-term vision that would include funding sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you. We have any other public input on the budget, early budget process? Okay, thank you very much. We'll now move to citizens' right to speak, open to anyone to speak on any item not on the agenda. We have some people signed up to speak. When I call your name, if you would please come to the microphone adjusted so you can talk clearly into the mic, because we want to record all of the comments, and give us your first name and last name and spell your last name and give us your address, and we'll start with Dorothy Archer and Jane Jones on deck.
My name is Dorothy Archer, 3640 Marshall Street, Wheat Ridge. Good evening, Mayor Starker, Council, and citizens. I want to congratulate Monica Duran and her fine job in running for District Representative 24, and thank her for the incredible job she has done over the years in representing District One. She has certainly stood up for the citizens in that area. I'll wait a minute for the printout to come around to you. Perhaps quite a few of you saw this in the Hub a couple of weeks ago, but I think it says a lot for going in the direction that I'm trying to go. In the very first column, it speaks of detached, single-family homes, rising 20 to 6 percent. As we go down to the comparisons of the cities surrounding us, Wheat Ridge, outstanding in people wanting to move here, 24 percent increase. For example, ranch-style, one-story homes in Jeffco saw an increase in price per capital square foot by 20.7 percent, whereas two-story homes saw an increase of 17 percent. Go down to the next paragraph, homes built before 1990 saw an average increase of 18 percent, wherein those built after 1990 saw an increase of 12 percent. Does this not justify me showing up week after week, speaking for many people? Single-family ranches, I don't care if they're old or they're new, they are sought after. Why do you think so many people continue to move to Wheat Ridge? Ask your neighbors, ask people around. Because we have community? Edgewater, Wheat Ridge, and Mountain View are the only cities left that even give a semblance of sanity, of peacefulness. Once you leave these three cities, the traffic, the noise, the insanity increases a hundredfold. I've said it before, once you cross Sheridan, it's like, phew. There's a peace about this city. Why are you not seeing that? This 35-foot, flat-roofed monkey business that was put in in 1969 has got to stop. Please address this issue. I have one more, I did not make a copy of this, I didn't think it was necessary. It's from Texas, so what? Ranch-style homes, farm-style homes, was it three stories? It was two. We have asked for 27 feet with a 15-foot bulk plane. We had construction company, the Mann people, 32nd and Teller, they bought the old farmhouse and put up a new house next to it. I went by and asked them, I said, how tall is the new house? 30 feet. How tall is the duplex behind it that they built? 27 feet, both with a slope roof.
Ms. Archer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jane Jones and Evan Clark on deck.
Hi, my name is Jane Jones and my dear life partner, Michael Corry, and I live at 6417 West 29th Avenue, where we intend to die. We're going to stay there, we love it. And congratulations, Monica, I am so thrilled. And then you're going to go to the big house this fall, and they'll have to replace you. I love her. Okay, I want to talk just real quick about something called Lateral Number 77 LLC. A couple of years ago, because I know how to do these things, I formed with the 13 owners of Water Rights from the Rocky Mountain ditch, an LLC. And this run, this is the ditch that comes off the Rocky Mountain main ditch, which runs from Wadsworth on the south side of 32nd. At about Salisbury, there's a head gate, that's for us that own, the 14 of us that own Water Rights, from, that comes all the way from Clear Creek, and we irrigate with it. And we have to, us members of the owners, keep it clear all the way down to, I think it goes underground at Ingalls and who knows where it goes after that. The reason I'm here is that I've worked with, it was Mr. Killie, I believe, at Public Works a couple of years ago to get some culverts replaced, because they were blocking our water. This is a prescriptive easement, you, nobody has a right to block it. Now I found another one, and I'll contact him again, it needs to be replaced underneath Pierce, excuse me, between Pierce and Newland on 31st. But the problem is, no one knows who does, isn't a member, no one knows this is here. We had a person who knew, down by J Street, who knew that there was an old wooden-buried ditch running along her property, but the woman on the other side said, she asked water people, when there was all the discussion about water work being done on 29th, she said, what about this, this easement, this water ditch? Nobody knows anything. So I'm just saying, who do I talk to, so that we get a little acknowledgement, understanding your public utilities people should know that there is a prescriptive easement running? And it's not on any deed, this is the horrible problem, it's just, it's just an easement because it was, it was set up back in, in the 1800s or the early 1900s. So, how do I get, we should be called for Blue, is it 811 or, yeah, 811. We should be on the list, so that when somebody calls to do construction, they will know that there is an easement running along there, that some of them are buried. And we have the LLC now for them, and I'm the executive manager, so I, it's like herding cats, I get all of us, we're all friends now, all the way up and down the ditch, we dig it out, we pay for all of that, but I think it should be recognized here in some better way. So the, and if I have to write letters to everybody who owns property along the ditch, I would do that, but I want to have your support first, because this spring, someone down off of J Street and 29th told the fence builder there was a ditch buried, they planted six or seven concrete posts right in the top of our old ditch that has had to be removed. And the neighbor on the other side says, she's asked about, what is this easement? And nobody here in the city or who works for the city knows anything about it. So who can I, can you tell me now whom I would contact?
Well, let me, Ms. Goff, can you answer this?
Sure, yes ma'am. Why don't you leave your contact information with Scott Brink, he's our Director of Public Works, before you leave, okay?
Great, and then we'll go to the next.
Thank you very much.
Don't forget, Lateral Number 77.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Evan Clark, and, and either it's Jan or Ian Clark on deck.
Hello, my name is Evan Clark, I live on 4665 Swadley Street, and I'm here to talk to you guys about our local 4H program. Not many people really know about the 4H program, and I'm part of the Jefferson County 4H program. I started five years ago, when I was eight, and now I'm 14. It's just given me so many wonderful opportunities. I all started with one goat that was provided by the fair, and now have a bunch of different animals and have learned about all the animals. Another thing is, I want to be a farmer or rancher when I grow up, and this has helped me learn, learn some skills to be able to do that. 4H has given me different skills also, such as being able to be in front of you all, teaching me different things about the livestock and animals, how to budget my money, a bunch of different things that I have been told that I learned way early, a lot earlier than most people do in their lives. And now I'm going to pass around one of the belt buckles that I have won from the fair, and also the jacket. So, so these are some of the awards we get from showing in our fair, from the different classes. The buckle is a breeding buckle I got for showing my grand champion breeding goat. There's market buckles and showmanship buckles. And I'm, I'm here to talk to you guys about these. We're asking for donations this year from people such as you, and that's what the form that I passed around talks about. The buckles and jackets this year for our 93 kids, I believe, cost about $8,000 to be able to buy and fund all the buckles and jackets. And they're just really cool rewards, and they're really good at motivating people to go out and work and work really hard to go and get these rewards. So if you guys could give a donation of a buckle, or a jacket, or just any donation at all, that would be very helpful, and if you are willing to do that, you could turn it into me or the CSU Extension Office. But if you don't want to give a donation, that's totally fine, I understand, but if you would, could you stop by our fair at the Jefferson County Fairgrounds from the 9th to 12th of August? I'm there, my brother's there, a bunch of other 4Hers are there, and we'd be willing to talk to you about a bunch of different things if you guys do stop by. So I hope to see you guys there, thank you for all your time.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, congratulations. I hope, I hope you get your buckle back, because it's pretty attractive. So our next speaker is Jan Clark and Annette Cannon on deck. Ian Clark, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name's Ian Clark, I'm from 4665 Swadley Street. Before I get into the whole 4H spiel, I'd like to, first off, give a little bit about myself. I'm a recent graduate of Wheat Ridge High School, class of 2018, and this year I will be attending the University of Wyoming for mechanical engineering. So I've been a part of, for, I've been a part of 4H for five years now, showing rabbits, goats, swine, steers, and archery. And as my brother hinted, 4H has given me a bunch of different opportunities to go to state conferences, meet with the state 4H president, talk in front of you all, and all these different life skills that without 4H I probably wouldn't have. As my brother hinted earlier, with our fair coming up in early August, about 9th through 12th, we would truly appreciate if you guys would consider coming down, and if you guys do come down, make sure to find the Clark boys. We'll be showing Friday through Saturday, and then we will have a auction on that Sunday. And it would be, it would be amazing if not only donations, but partnering with 4H as the city of Wheat Ridge, and help with those funds. Before I forget, this is just like my brother's, but has a couple of different classes that I won, including rabbits, goats, all that. So with that being said, thank you guys for all your time and hope to see you out at the fair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, and congratulations. Our next speaker is Annette Cannon and Rachel Hulteen on deck.
Hi, my name's Annette Cannon, and I'm not from Wheat Ridge, I'm actually from Westminster. I live at 9460 Harlan Court in Westminster. And I'm here tonight because I wanted to introduce myself to the Council and to the people that were here. I'm running for Jefferson County Coroner. I just recently won the primary, so now I'm going to be on the November ballot. And I wanted to give you some of my cards. I have some more cards on the back table, but I'm a registered nurse, and I've been a nurse for over 38 years, and I've always advocated for my patients my entire career. I've advocated for patients when they're dying, and now I'm wanting to advocate for patients after they're deceased. I think it's a very important job, and I think it's important to get somebody in there that realizes that. I have a lot of management experience, very compassionate, and have, I would, I would say, high ethical standards when it comes to just people in general and dealing with On my card, I've got some places on the back to email me and how to follow me on my website and on Facebook, if you're on Facebook. And just, I wanted to say that being the coroner for Jefferson County and serving the people of Jefferson County would be my greatest honor, and wanted to thank everybody for their support and for being in my corner, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rachel Hulteen.
Good evening again, Rachel Hulteen, 4690 Balsam. So I'm going to try and pack this into three minutes, I have a lot of things that I want to thank the city for tonight. The first that comes to mind is the investment that the city is making in improving the 38th Avenue corridor between Wadsworth and Sheridan. It has been absolutely delightful to watch the crews install the improved handicap ramps at the corners, as well as repairing segments of sidewalk that are disruptive. And I think Wheat Ridge should feel really proud of being a stand-up city that is prioritizing that and funding that. I sent pictures of the sidewalks and curb ramps under construction to a lot of my friends who work on this stuff across the state, and there were a lot of expressions of wow and jealousy, and I'm just really proud of our city for, for taking those actions. And I know that this is the first year of many, and I just want to thank you for, for putting that into action. I also want to thank so many of you who were involved in the project to get the Greetings from Wheat Ridge art project up at Anderson Pool Building. I hope everyone's had a chance to see it. I want to thank Councilmembers Matthew and Dozeman for coming to our Meet the Artist event, and it's been really fun, almost every time I've gone to Anderson Pool, I've seen people taking their picture in front of it, and I think it's just a really great expression of city pride. And then the last city proud moment, which was a month-long moment, was the Active Living Month, which is a partnership of Healthy Wheat Ridge, which is our city's healthy eating, active living committee. And we partner with organizations such as Lutheran, Local Works, Jefferson County Public Health, Kaiser Permanente. And over the course of the month of June, there were 20 free events that were held throughout the city. Some of them were really big events, like the Criterion, and some were smaller events, like Fitness on the Green. But we had hundreds and hundreds of people participate. From the registrations we got, we had people from 50 different zip codes, and it was just a really impressive expression of how our city is a great place to live. And I know a lot of people get up here and they say, I've lived here for 40 years, and, well, I just want to get up and say, I am looking forward to living here for another 40 years, and the investments that the city is making in that get me really excited, so thank you.
Thank you. That concludes all of the people that have signed up to speak. Is there anyone else here in the council chambers who would like to speak under citizens' right to speak? Okay, we will close that portion of our agenda and move on to item number one. This is our consent agenda. Ms. Duran, would you please introduce item number one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Item 1A, motion to approve payment to Kaiser Permanente for July 2018 membership billing in the amount of $193,409.15. Item 1B, motion to approve a contribution to the Wheat Ridge Carnation Festival Committee in the amount of $80,000.
Counselors, before I ask for a motion on both of these, is there any, do we want to take anything off the consent agenda? Ms. Duran, would you please provide us with a notion, a motion on the consent agenda?
Yes, I will. I move to pay the July 2018 Kaiser bill in the total amount of $193,409.15. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead with item number.
You want me to read them both?
Number B, both, yes.
1B, I move to approve a contribution to the Wheat Ridge Carnation Festival Committee in the amount of $80,000.
Second. I think Mr. Matthews got the second on that one. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries 7 to 0.
Thank you. Item number two, Mr. Fitzgerald, would you please introduce item number two?
This is a public hearing and ordinance for second reading. Council Bill Number 18-2018, an ordinance providing for a 2.5 percent admission tax credit, 1.5 percent sales tax credit, and 5 percent lodging tax credit against certain public improvement fees paid at Clear Creek Crossing issue. The city will consider entering into a public finance agreement, otherwise known as a PFA, with the Long Peak Metropolitan District and the Evergreen Clear Creek Crossing LLC, concerning the finance and construction of certain public improvements in association with Clear Creek Crossing project. The PFA contemplates the city imposing a 1.5 percent sales tax credit, 5 percent lodging tax credit, and 2.5 percent admissions tax credit with the district for up to 30 years or when the bonds are repaid. To finance the construction of public improvements for the project, this ordinance implements the PFA by granting credits against these revenue sources that will be shared with the district for payment of the bonds issued to construct those public improvements. The PFA and the ordinance are designed to work together to provide for public financing component of the cost of construction of the public improvements at Clear Creek Crossing.
Thank you. This is a public hearing and an ordinance on second reading. Madam Clerk, do we have an ordinance number?
This will be, excuse me, this will be ordinance number 1649.
1649, and I am going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do we have a presentation?
We do, Mr. Goff is going to give the presentation. I think it is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been a long time coming to get to this, this point this evening. I think I was 12 when we first started this project, or at least I didn't have gray hair when we started this project. So, not with the current developers, so, but there's been several developers that have tried to develop this property over the years in Wheat Ridge. So we're, we're very excited that this is hopefully at the goal line this evening. So good, good evening. Tonight, we're here to ask for City Council approval on several items associated with the Clear Creek Crossing project. We have a, a whole team out here in the audience, Tyler Carlson with Evergreen Devco, our developer, and his team is here, Kim Seder, who represents the Long Peak Metropolitan District, and his team is here, and Andrew Knutson from EPS, the city's third-party real estate economics consultant, and his team is also here to help answer any questions this evening. I would like to start out with a, a short presentation on the Clear Creek Crossing project. This public hearing we're currently under is for the public improvement fee ordinance. But there's several other items that are related to this project that you will consider this evening also, and those include an amended and restated Long Peak Metropolitan District service plan, the public finance agreement, the termination and release of an annexation agreement, and termination of the 2006 intergovernmental agreement with the Long Peak Metropolitan District. Whoops, I'm not adjusting my slides, am I? There you go, went through those. City Council has also already approved several other agenda items over the last several months that are related to this project. Back, back in March, I believe, the City Council approved an IGA with the district for construction of the I-70 32nd Avenue hook ramps and improvements. of the I-70 32nd Avenue hook ramps and improvements. Also, an IGA with the Colorado Department of Transportation for the maintenance, future maintenance of those hook ramps. An IGA again with the district for hook ramp cost reimbursement. The hook ramps, the city allocated $10 million from our II bond fund towards these hook ramps, but the estimate has come in at about $15 million. So there's a reimbursement IGA in place that talks about the city paying for those, any additional costs above $10 million, and then being reimbursed through the district bonds. A rezoning of the property was approved from planned commercial development to planned mixed-use development, and most recently, a subdivision plan was approved on this property. So the proposal, the project that we are speaking about specifically tonight, is a mixed-use community that is going to include a range of mixes of retail, entertainment, restaurants, hospitality, multifamily, and employment. The proposed project is anticipated to include approximately 300 apartment units, 200 hotel rooms, and roughly 200,000 square feet of commercial space, including large-format entertainment users. In addition, the project is proposed to include a 26.6-acre SLC Lutheran Medical Campus. In total, we're looking at approximately half a billion dollars in private investment in this project. This slide here is a picture of the crossings. This is kind of the heart of the development, that gathering place that we continually hear from our residents that we don't have in Wheat Ridge. They want a place that we can go similar to a lot of the areas that are in other cities. So we're very excited about the prospect of this crossings. So the project's cost for this proposed project totaled just over $64 million. A good chunk of that is in land costs. The hard cost, which include the hook ramps, is just over $45 million. Soft cost is $7 million, and financing cost of just over a half a million dollars. Because of that, there's a lot of expenses, as you can see, in this project. So that's why we're in front of you tonight for this PIF ordinance and some of the items that are coming up next. The total of public improvements that have been identified as part of this project totaled about $43.6 million. About $36.7 million of those are eligible for public reimbursement. And private sector, the developer and the district have identified about $7 million of those that they would pay for. But you can see there's different categories here that show the complexity of this project and why it's so expensive to develop. You see that there's a lot of demolition grading and erosion control cost, storm sewer wetlands, the public streets throughout the project, signage, utilities, both dry and wet, trails and sidewalks and such. So there's about $43 million of public improvements that have been identified for this project. So that's why Evergreen has come to the city and has asked for some public assistance to help with this project. They are asking for a total contribution of $20 million towards those costs from both the city and the city's Wheat Ridge Urban and Rural Authority. Without this contribution, we've identified through the pro forma and analysis of that that the project would, the return on cost for the project would be a negative 19%. Obviously, no developer is going to move forward on a project with a negative 19% return. With a $20 million public assistance package, the return on cost is estimated at 17%. The city used our third-party consultant, EPS, to evaluate the developer's pro forma. Many hours were spent scrubbing these numbers. And with all the numbers associated with the project, EPS is here this evening, and we can answer any more specific detailed questions about these numbers and pro forma. So how are we going to provide that $20 million? So we are breaking it down into two different sources. One, first of all, is a $15 million bond that the district will issue. And that bond will be serviced by several different revenue sources, some that come from the Long Peak Metropolitan District and the rest that come from the city. In this chart, you can see there's four different revenue sources: retail PIF, admissions PIF, and accommodations PIF, and property tax. The district, Long Peak Metropolitan District, is proposing to implement a 0.5% retail admissions and accommodations PIF, and then also 35 mils of property tax. They're asking from the city to share 1.5% of the city's 3.5% sales tax, 2.5% of its 4% admissions tax, and 5% of its 10% accommodation tax. And none other property tax will support this $15 million bond. The second portion that makes up the gap to meet the full $20 million is a $5 million loan from the Urban and Rural Authority. That would be serviced with 100% of the property tax increment that will be generated off this project. The URA has been approved, bank-approved, for a loan for a net amount of $5 million. The URA authority is going to be looking at those loan documents in the next couple weeks to hopefully approve that loan with Colorado State Bank. So what are the benefits to the city? This project's going to generate a lot of new revenues in the city. The city's going to keep a good chunk of those on day one. This chart here breaks down what those different revenue sources are and what they are on an annual basis. General merchandise tax or our sales tax, the city will be keeping 1.5% on day one. We're estimating that's about a half a million dollars a year in sales tax revenues to the city. The admissions tax, which will be 1.5%, just over $88,000, and then our accommodations tax, 5% of our 10% is just under $300,000. There will be some one-time use tax revenues too, which I'll speak to in a minute. But there's also going to be a rebate, projected rebate back to the city. All these revenue sources are going to be more than enough to pay the debt service on the bonds, those $15 million bonds. So we're projecting that there's going to be excess revenues above that debt service that will come back to the city. And the public finance agreement that you'll consider later lays that out and requires the district and the trustee to provide those excess revenues back to the city. So it's about 1.3 million in new revenues to the city on an annual basis. And with that rebate back to the city, that 1.5% sharing of the city's sales tax essentially drops to 0.4%. So we're not going to be sharing 1.5% for 30 years. Essentially, we're going to, we have to, we have to logistically share the 1.5% against the bonds, but with the rebate, when you calculate that, it's actually dropped to 0.4%. So over a 30-year period, that's about 41.3%. $41.3 million of new revenues to the city. This doesn't include all of the actual revenues to the city. There's going to be some one-time tax, use tax revenues that I mentioned that are not included in this chart, but we're estimating approximately $9 million of use tax revenue from the new vertical building construction will come to the city. We're also estimating about $1.6 million that will come from the temporary 0.5% sales tax that the city has for our II. None of that money can go towards this project. It's allocated and has to go towards the II project. So that 0.5% will generate about $1.6 million. And eventually, there will be some property tax. Once the property tax 25-year clock has expired, I think in 2041 is when that will happen, the city will start generating some of its local 1.83 mil property tax. So that, it's about $380,000 that the city will see there. So in addition to the $41 million, there's over $10, $11 million in additional revenues that the city will also see. So the project revenues that will be dedicated to the project are on this slide. And on the top portion is the public revenues. So again, the sales tax credit PIF, again, it's 1.5%, so that generates the same amount that the city's getting, a half a million. The admissions credit PIF at 2.5% will generate just under $150,000 a year, and the accommodations credit PIF will generate just under $300,000 a year. The district hears that rebate. The district will have to pay back the city or provide the excess revenues to the city, and that's about $400,000 a year. And then the district, the Long Peak Metropolitan District, is also going to basically tax itself and provide revenues for this project. They're going to implement a 35 mil on the property, which will generate about $773,000 in revenues a year. And then their add-on PIFs generate $184,000, $29,000, and $29,000 respectively for the three different revenue sources. So all these revenues on an annual basis will generate about $1.6 million or just under $50 million over 30 years. However, if you notice, only 18 of those come from public revenue sources, and 30, just over 30 million, come from the district revenue sources. So when you look at that in a bigger picture, over a 30-year period, the city is, will, we're projecting, receive about 70% of the new revenues off this project. About 30% will go towards the project to help pay for the public infrastructure that is required. So the PIF ordinance that is in front of you tonight, as Mr. Fitzgerald read, implements the public finance agreement by granting credits against the certain revenue sources that will be shared with the district. And so that's what's in front of you right now. And we will have, as I mentioned, five other issues that will come before you later. We do have one amendment that we are recommending on this PIF ordinance. It's amendment to the definition of bonds. And I actually have a written copy here we can hand out. We determined we needed to amend the definition of bonds in the PIF ordinance. We were able to do that in the public finance agreement. But as you know, this PIF ordinance was already brought to you on first reading. This is second reading, so that definition hadn't been changed yet. We're basically asking you to amend, if you decide to approve this this evening, to amend the ordinance to add the words "to which the credit PIF revenues are pledged in accordance with the public finance agreement" in the definition of bonds. So with that, I will stop, and we will take any questions that you may have.
Is the applicant, do we have an, is the applicant going to make any testimony?
I think they're just here to answer.
Just here to answer questions if we need them?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't we hold off questioning if we might and see if there's any members of the public who would like to speak on this item? And on item number two, which is where we are, I don't have anybody signed up to speak. Is there anyone in the council chambers who would like to speak on item number two? All right. I don't see anyone, so we'll move to questions from council then. Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in the event that the Urban and Rural does not approve the loan, what is the process after that?
Very good question. Actually, there's enough revenue sources from the city sources to service a larger bond than $15 million. It will service up to $17 million. So that's one option. If for some reason the loan doesn't come through, we could issue, or the district could issue a bond of $17 million, so there's only a $3 million gap. Developer Tyler and I have discussed this at length, and as he mentioned to me this morning, it's basically on Evergreen to figure out how to fill that additional gap. But we still have many options that we can look at. It won't increase, what it won't do is won't increase the amount of sales tax, lodging tax, accommodation tax that we have to commit to. Those numbers will stay the same. So there's many options. We could look at another bank. We could look at, we're still going to have, estimating to have significant amount of property tax increment coming off those properties, so there's different ways to monetize that. So hopefully, it's approved. We believe it's going to be approved. The bank's approved it. The URA authority is on board in concept at this point. It's just they haven't approved the final loan documents.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As it relates to the PIF that's levied by the Longs Peak Metro District at 35 mils, how did that 35 mil number come to be, or what's the impetus for that as far as, why isn't it 55, or why is it 25?
Yeah. Maybe that would be a good question for Tyler. We started at 30 mils, and we asked them to increase that a little bit to have more of the revenue coming from the district instead of the city. But he'll speak to why it can't go much higher.
Councilman Urban, it's a great question. The Metro District.
Just for the record, let's get you.
Tyler Carlson, managing partner at Evergreen Development. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Metro District mill levy is actually 50 mils, but of the 50, 15 are pledged for operations and maintenance, and then 35 are pledged for debt service. Initially, we had 30 mils of debt service and 20 mils of operation and maintenance because we wanted to have more revenue for programming. And obviously, we're going to maintain all the public improvements out there to a first-class standard. When we got into some of the challenges of financing this project, especially as it related to the Urban Renewal Authority, we needed to squeeze a little more juice out of the Metro District. And fortunately, the district board was willing to allocate more towards debt and less towards operations. We don't feel comfortable cutting it any tighter. To be honest with you, if you make your operating mill levy too narrow, too tight, you tend to get problems down the road with maintenance of all these facilities. And there are plenty of busted districts, especially out in Aurora, who saw that during the recession, where they had very skinny operational budgets, and you had weed problems and sidewalks cracking, and there's no money to replace it. So we feel like, based upon the projections of the revenues, that that 15 mils we've set aside for operations and maintenance will allow us to adequately maintain all the public facilities out there, which are significant. If you notice in the public budget, there's $5 million in there for drainage improvements, you know, to catch all the storm water coming off of applewood, and there's very significant detention ponds. We don't want those to become trash landfills. We want them to be landscaped and maintained and mucked out and everything else, and that's where those revenues will go towards.
And as far as? As far as the 50-mil cap, how did that come to be?
So 50 mils is pretty much the standard across the metro area for the maximum that users will swallow. You know, one of the big issues, I'm actually speaking at the legislature at on Friday, is commercial property tax impacts and frankly, the crisis facing tenants right now. Because, you know, if you do 50 mils, that's, you know, that has to be paid by someone, and ultimately, it's paid by the end-users and the tenants involved. And what we're facing right now is because of the latest assessment cycle and because of Gallagher and Taber and Amendment 23, we've got property tax burdens that are putting businesses out of business. And you've actually probably already seen some turnover, as an example, of our Denver West and that new project on the far west end because of very high property tax bills associated with that project, which has a very high mill levy. So it's a balancing act of trying to finance debt, but also not overloading your project with too much debt that the end-users can't afford to pay it. And if we're going to create the crossings, as we've idealized it, with mom-and-pop businesses and local chefs, you know, they don't want to be paying $15 a square foot in taxes, which is what you'll end up getting, frankly, if we keep on going down the road we're going. So 50 is what we determined was what was reasonable. There are other districts out there that have larger mill levies, and the end-users are suffering, if I'm being candid with you. So if it was up to me, we'd do this without any district financing because I'd rather keep my cams lower to make sure I've got a better, more viable, leasable project. But that's not reality here. We have a huge public finance obligation, and everyone's got to chip in, and so we're taxing ourselves in the process.
Thank you. Before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion, is there any more questions of council for staff or the applicant? And I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion is in order. Mr. Fitzgerald.
I move to amend Council Bill Number 18-2018, which is ordinance 1649, providing a 2.5% admissions tax credit, 1.5% sales tax credit, and 5% lodging tax credit against certain public improvement fees paid at Clear Creek Crossing on second reading, and that it take effect immediately upon adoption as permitted by Section 5.11 of the Charter with the following amendment. That the definition of bonds be amended, appearing in Section 1, be amended to read, "Bonds means one or more series of bonds to which the credit PIF revenues are pledged in accordance with the public finance agreement issued by the district in accordance with the terms of the Act, which may be in the form of a note, loan, or other financial obligation identified as a bond, including any bonds, notes, loans, or other financial obligations issued by the district to refund bonds."
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion among the council? Would the clerk please poll the council?
Oh, please vote again. I cleared it instead of showing it. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Hmm. I think we may need to clear it again and...
All right.
And try it again. All right. Let's poll the council. Thank you. That concludes item number two. We'll move to item number three. Mr. Pond, would you introduce item number three?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to introduce Resolution Number Forty-three dash two thousand eighteen, a resolution approving the, the amended and restated service plan for the Long's Peak Metropolitan District. At issue, the Long's Peak Metropolitan District has petitioned the city to approve an amended and restated service plan that sets forth how the district may provide finance, and finance public improvements and services for the Clear Creek Crossing project.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing. Mr. Goff, do we have a presentation on this, or is this...
We do. We do. We have a short presentation from Kim Setter, who represents the Long's Peak Metropolitan District.
Thank you. If you'd come to the microphone and introduce yourself.
I'm Kim, K-I-M, Setter, S-E-T-E-R, with Setter Van De Wold.
If you'd just raise your microphone just a little.
And we are the attorneys for the Long's Peak Metropolitan District. We initially formed the district in two thousand six, and at that time, it was developed in the context of the Cabela's Project, which is now long gone. So, the amended and restated service plan that you have in front of you tonight was intended to clarify that same service plan, but now in the new context of Clear Creek Crossing. The same provisions are in the agreement that was initial, the initial IGA with the city, and/or in the old service plan. They've just been reorganized to fit the things that Mr. Goff just told you all about. The second item I wanted to point out is that the agreements with the city and the agreements with the developer that are attached to the service plan are drafts. They're just designed to show you that we can actually do this if we all work together, and those IGAs will come to you later in the month for approval in their final form. And then, thirdly, Mr. Dahl has presented you with the findings you need to make to approve the service plan on page three of your staff report. The first four items are the required findings. The first two of those are to find that there is inadequate service, and there will be inadequate service available in the area. As you know, right now, it's just a big pile of dirt. There are no services available there, and that's our job as the district, is to prevent, to, I'm sorry, to provide those public services and facilities. Items C and D have to do with the financing. Our evidence of proof that we can finance this project are the items discussed with you by Mr. Goff a few moments ago, and there is an agreement and other bond runs attached as Exhibit E to that service plan. And with that, we're simply requesting approval of the amended and restated service plan so that we can move forward.
Thank you very much. Before we go to questions, I will go to public comment. I do not have anyone signed up to speak on item number three, but I would like to open it up for anyone in the, in the council chambers who would like to speak on this item to come forth now. I see none, so we will, we will move forward. And now, I will open it up for questions of council on item number three. We don't seem to have any questions, so I guess I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion is in order. Mr. Pond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number Forty-three dash two thousand eighteen, a resolution approving the amended and restated service plan for the Long's Peak Metropolitan District.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Was, Mr. Fitzgerald, were you the second?
Yes.
Thank you. We will move to item number four. Mr. Matthews, would you please introduce item number four?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number four is Council Bill Number Thirteen dash twenty-eighteen, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at one hundred twenty-six zero zero West Forty-second Avenue from Agriculture One to Plan Commercial Development, and for approval of an outline development plan, case number WZ dash eighteen dash zero eight slash Ball. At issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from Agriculture One to a planned commercial development for property located at one-two-six-zero-zero West Forty-second Avenue.
Thank you. This is a public hearing and an ordinance. Just to double-check with our clerk, I have ordinance number sixteen forty-six on this. Is that correct? Okay.
Yes. This, this was already assigned an ordinance number at the original opening of the hearing.
That's correct. So, we are continuing a public hearing, so I am going to continue the public hearing, and it looks like we have a staff report from Miss Record.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the record, Meredith Record, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, and I'm, I don't really have a big, long presentation to give you this evening, but I just thought I'd remind you of where we've been. So, on June eleventh, just a month or so ago, we did have a public hearing to consider a zone change from Agricultural One to Plan Commercial Development with an outline development plan at property located at twelve-six-hundred West Forty-second Avenue.
Miss Record, excuse me, I, I'd like to interrupt you. We, this is a quasi-judicial matter, and I should be swearing in everyone so, on this. So, if you intend to, to testify on this, would you please stand and take a quick oath for me? If you'd raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth in this matter as you understand it? If you do, please answer, "I do."
I do.
Thank you. You may sit down, and my apologies, please continue.
No problem. So, again, just to remind you of where we, where we are tonight, we did have a public hearing on June eleventh, two thousand eighteen, where we heard testimony from staff, the applicant, members of the audience, and so on. There was a motion to continue the case until this evening, July ninth, two thousand eighteen, with new information being requested to be presented this evening: Submission of a Traffic Data, Strategies for Traffic Mitigation. We gave you the same packet we gave you the last time. We did include the engineer's report, which was included as Attachment Six. I would like to go ahead and enter that into the record with the typical zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, contents of the digital presentation. So, with that, I'm gonna take my seat. The applicant is in the audience and does have a presentation, and so with that, I will, I will end my part and go on to the applicants.
Very good. If the applicant would like to come forward and give us your name and address, and please continue.
Good evening. Chris Ball, one-nine-five-four-two-West-Fifty-seventh-Circle-Golden. Council, thank you for hearing this tonight and for your consideration here. The project is Clear Creek Tech, and the idea, we'd like to rezone the property from an A-one zoning to a planned commercial development. Just to give you a quick update, Chris Ball, Paradise Farms is our entity. We've got two generations of family development that've done summer-style products around the area, been in Jefferson County for sixteen years myself. One thing I want to remind you of is, this is a long-term investment for us, so it's really important for us to make sure we complete a really high-quality project. I think that aligns well with the, the city's missions for this site. What are we gonna build? A single-story office commercial structure. This is gonna provide local businesses a place to grow their businesses. It's also gonna provide the community quality jobs, hopefully, close to home. Here's a couple pictures of some existing products that we've done in the area. Development highlights, some of the reasons why we're pursuing this project, a lot of positive development in the area, Clear Creek Crossing is, is a great example. The site has excellent access to major roads and highways, which are important for businesses. Wheat Ridge's location is desired by many businesses. We've got a lot of clients who are located in Wheat Ridge now or surrounding areas, and would like to grow their businesses in the area. Speed-to-market, this idea is that unfortunately, a lot of small businesses don't have the time or wherewithal to go and, go through a rezoning and develop a property. So, our hope is that by us going through the, through this process, and then bringing a building to market that caters to these companies, we can help them achieve their business goals. The current zoning is A-one. The challenge with this, from a development standpoint, is really, it's not economically feasible to develop a single-family house on a one-point-one-acre site. Another concept we, we've shared in previous discussions is that the area's in transition. We did talk to some resident developers about the site, and many thought it was just too commercially oriented to develop as residential, even with a more dense site. The aerial on the right there shows the non-commercial, excuse me, the non-residential uses that are currently in the area, with the site highlighted in red. The proposed uses, so we worked with staff extensively to work on a list of acceptable uses, realizing this area is in transition. We also worked with staff to exclude uses that we think would not work well for the area. There's a few examples here: Auto service and repair, contractor's storage yard, car wash, anything marijuana-related, we chose not to, to pursue uses of that nature. Pride of ownership, again, we really want to, to have a quality, low-impact uses that is gonna help maintain our property over the long haul as well. So, those uses that I would imagine some of the neighbors might not want are probably the same ones that we don't want either. One thing we've agreed to with staff as well is limiting the hours of operation from seven AM to nine PM. Any work that was done on-site will be with the bay doors closed, trying to mitigate any issues in the area. We've enhanced the landscaping to buffer the residential to the west. Site design, it really appeals to small companies and does not really accommodate any large trucks. I know that was a concern for the, for the neighborhood and community. The final point here, the traffic study shows the impact will be minimal, but even so, we are agreeable to pay for any mitigation as outlined in the condition with the motion, but with some clarification. So, in your packet, there's a motion that has two conditions. One relates to the twenty-five percent office requirement. We're agreeable to that condition. However, with the condition located here relative to the potential mitigation and cost of that, we'd like to try to tighten that up, and so we've added two concepts here. One would be that this condition would be within the next twenty-four months, as well as this would be after building completion. The logic is simply, if, if the neighbor decides to move forward with a mitigation plan, and we still have a vacant piece of land, we don't think that that would be appropriate for us to fund those improvements, because I don't think we're contributing to any of that traffic at that time. So, our hope is you would consider those two modifications or something similar to that relative to the condition relating to the mitigation. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Before we go into questions, I'd like to open it up, or I'd like to have a public testimony on this. We have several people that have signed up to speak. If you would come forth now, Esther Kettering to speak, and Cindy Beckfield on deck. And if you would, give us your name and address.
Yes. My name is Esther Kettering. I am with Cushman &amp; Wakefield Commercial Real Estate Company, and my office is at fourteen-oh-one Lawrence Street in Denver. Chris Ball is a colleague of mine, and I've been helping him with the rezoning effort, and I was the listing broker on the property when he purchased the property. I have four letters here that I would like to provide to council, and they are from three nearby commercial property owners and the Jefferson Economic Council. They all speak to their support of the project, and I can either read these into the record or you can simply look at them. Some of the, a couple of these are emails, and a couple are direct letters. One in particular, in fact, I think a couple of them, but one in particular, is from Dale Windgrove, who is immediately across the street, owner of Radio Resource, which is about a twelve-thousand-square-foot building at twelve-seven-oh-one-West-Forty-second Avenue. He has owned that building and the business, which has been in business for twenty-nine years, but at that location for probably the last nine years, since two thousand nine. He has eighteen employees, and he sells and services Motorola two-way radio systems, and he is very much in support of seeing this project go forward, as opposed to maintaining the property as vacant land, which has been somewhat of a nuisance to his business. And I know that there might have been some comments about how that building was vacant, but he's been in business there for a long time, actively doing his thing with Motorola. The second letter was addressed to Mayor Bud Starker, and it was sent by the Jefferson County Economic Development Corporation, speaking to the shortage of flex space in the county and the need for office flex space that would attract the type of jobs that Jeffco EDC is seeking for the community. The third one is from Jody Alderman, who is attorney for DBC Irrigation Company, which is at twelve-seven-fifty-West-Forty-second Avenue on the corner of Youngfield and Forty-second. And they have no objection to the proposed rezoning of the property, and they, in fact, have been very conscientious about mitigating their own traffic in the neighborhood by having a no-left-turn sign on their property, but they're very close to Youngfield, so most of their property comes, most of their traffic comes off Youngfield anyway. The other one is from the Chuck Brewer, representing the Brewer family, who owns property in the neighborhood, and they would be in favor of seeing more and new commercial development in the neighborhood that would also promote viable business environment. And I've entered these four letters into the record, and that's it. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cindy Beckfeld, and Greg Boom on deck.
Cindy Beckfeld, forty-three sixty-five Exxon. First of all, I'd like to know about the road test. The strips were down for four hours, and they were at the, down from the least busiest times of day, like from nine to maybe two. Well, all the businesses do their, the daycares, the doggy daycares, the other businesses that's in that area do their main business from seven in the morning to seven at night. So, they missed the most important time of it, the traffic on that street. That traffic is unreal on that street during those hours. I wanna talk, I've been asked you last time to take a look at the park. I'm gonna ask that the easement behind that property stays open, so the people from our street and other areas can walk to the park instead of walking down Forty-fourth or ride the horses to the park. The, the park has redone that whole area, and it's very busy, and a lot of people are walking from our street down there to the park. We had a gentleman that just recently bought some property. It was gonna be his dream house, and now he's selling his property because, number one, of the storage place, and number two, of the office building, it's getting too commercial for him. He doesn't want his three-year-old son running around the neighborhood with a bunch of traffic up and down the street. Our neighbors let their kids play basketball out in the street, which had, they have for years with no problem. with no problem, but the traffic's gotten so bad they can no longer play basketball in the street. We've got animals that run, get loose sometimes and get hit. Rabbits are getting hit. We've had deer that used to come up to the neighborhood and eat apples off the neighbors' trees and they used to be laying in the fields where you could go out and watch them. There's no more wildlife whatsoever in the neighborhood. It's just like, all of a sudden, our neighborhood has been turned into a business. It's no longer a neighborhood. It's just like you guys don't care and I'd just like to ask, how would you like it? And I may be a little out of line here, but have three or four houses of your neighbors' houses across the street from you tore down and have a Walmart or some kind of business put in the place of your neighborhood? That's how we are feeling. You're destroying our neighborhood. You're tearing the empty lots away, our open spaces away and you're putting businesses in, which is like to me, like having your houses tore down or the houses across the street from you tore down and having a business put in place of your neighbors' houses. Come to our neighborhood and look at it. It's not a bad neighborhood. And they said early in the meeting that houses are short, people need more homes. What's wrong with putting homes in that area, putting houses in that area and not businesses? We've got homeless people all over that neighborhood, people that need a home. Why can't we build houses on there and let these, and help these people find homes? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Greg Boom.
Hi, my name's Greg Boom. I live at 4225 Bimini Street and I also own 4200 Xenon Street, which is just basically diagonal to this development. Most of the stuff I've already talked to you about last time, I'll just go through it really quick again. Basically, you're switching something from A1 to commercial. It's got A1 all the way around it, yet you're putting a commercial property right in the middle of agricultural property. So, it just doesn't make sense. There's no transition. Wheat Ridge has a transition program where they go, you know, agricultural to residential and to start a commercial and then into industrial. This doesn't fit that plan. It doesn't fit what you guys have normally planned for development and for any type of housing or any type of thing. It just doesn't fit. Like they said before, they need houses. I would love to buy that property if it was reasonably priced and build a duplex or build, maybe put three houses on that property. It would be economical feasible. I mean, with the cost of rents, with the cost of housing on there, I own three properties there and it added up to a million bucks. I mean, it's not cheap to have houses. You can make a lot of money off of houses there. It's Wheat Ridge is, that's what people love about Wheat Ridge, not the commercial. They love the houses and moving there and living there. The guy that just moved in next door, Zach, I just met him the other day and I was unable to get him to come to the meeting because he had tied up, he does with his work and stuff, so he couldn't show up here. But he'd like to see it as an open property and have the Green Belt people buy it and keep it as a park. I mean, that's what he would like to see because he lives right next door to it. The building across the street, it's 12,000 square feet. There's two empty places in there and one rented space in there. So, we already have empty commercial property right across the street, available right there. I don't know why we need more commercial property right on our, you know, neighborhood street. It just doesn't really fit the place. It doesn't make sense. I saw that they're going to do this I-70 across the street on I-70, this crossing thing. That's where this building needs to be. That's where you need to do this commercial. You've got this huge investment. Put something there. Make it so that people come and do the commercial stuff on the other side of I-70. That's what all this is designed for, not a neighborhood, not a little corner neighborhood street. That's, it just doesn't make sense. The traffic, the traffic's a nightmare down there already. And the thing about this traffic study, they say not a minimal impact. Well, the school isn't even in session right now. So, when the little school's in session, you're going to have a lot of kids there running around. They park across the street, the kids run across the street to go to their mom and dad's car and get picked up and stuff. It can be a dangerous situation if you've got more commercial and more cars driving back and forth and not paying attention, trucks and delivery trucks and vans and things. I know they're going to try to limit it, but that's not the reality. That's not what happens. They always have different trucks and things coming down for commercial use. Remember, this was done before. They tried to get this zoned as commercial and they tried to put a three-stage thing on there with a second story. It got turned down. You guys turned this down before. What's the difference between now and then? There is nothing that's changed in that neighborhood to make it different, to make it approvable. What, is it magically the street has got wider, the less people are living there now? It's, nothing has changed. It's the same. So, I don't understand what would be different now for passing it versus back then when you guys didn't pass it and you turned it down. There's also the pathway to the Green Belt, which is a consideration. There should be some type of easement there or something so that can maintain there. I don't know how you guys would do that. There's a ditch that runs across the property, the lean balm, and we get our water to water our horse pastures through that ditch. So, I don't know how that would be addressed or what needs to be done there, but it does go across the property. Again, there's a school there with small children. I hate to see more traffic and a possible chance of, you know, with commercial building with the children walking across the street and things. And I know that they said what, last time, if you guys didn't approve it last time, the contract was null and void. Well, obviously, it either wasn't or they redid some new contract or something because something has changed and they're still here trying to get this approved. Last is Marnie Boom lives at 4210 Xenon Street. She wasn't able to be here and she strongly opposes this. She just was tied up at work and she couldn't get it off. So, it's another street, that's the house is right next to the 4200 Xenon Streets and she has a large investment there. That house was just appraised at $490,000. So, you know, people have investments to Wheat Ridge and they love this place. They want to move here. We need houses. We need, you know, a duplex or maybe three houses on this property, not commercial buildings. Build it across I-70 where it belongs, you know, save our neighborhood. Please, I hope you guys do the right thing.
Thank you. That was all the people that I had signed up on the list. Is there anyone here in the council chambers that would like to speak at this time? Okay, I'm going to open the, open item number four up to questions from council for staff or the applicant. Do we have questions? Mr. Fitzgerald.
I'd like to ask the applicant, would you be amenable to making some provisions so that people can get to the park?
Yes, we've learned about this social trail that's in place now and I think it'd be great if there's some way to formalize that. What I could not, I guess, live with is this existing condition where there's nothing in place for us or the other neighboring properties, so it's informal and social. So, I think if we can get the other property owners involved and do some kind of, you know, real trail there, I think it'd be an awesome asset.
Thank you. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The questions for the city attorney, in our last public hearing, you'd mentioned that if councillors are, weren't not, were not present, that they would have to then acknowledge that or otherwise go through that process with you and I just wanted to give you that opportunity.
Thank you. I appreciate you reminding me. I'd forgotten that and we could probably do that now as good a time as any. Which council members are here tonight that were not here at the last hearing? Councilmember Pond, you've confirmed you were not here for the original hearing. This is a continued hearing, so obviously there was testimony taken at the original hearing. Have you had the opportunity to review the minutes and other materials from the hearing on, when was the first hearing?
Yes, I've reviewed the minutes.
Excellent. And have you also reviewed the packet materials that-
Yes.
-were provided at that time and also tonight?
Yes.
Do you believe that you're well-informed and capable of making an informed and fair decision on the matter?
I believe so.
Okay. With that in mind, I conclude that Councilmember Pond can and should participate. Thank you, Councilmember Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl and Mr. Urban. Additional questions from council? I'm going to close the public hearing and a motion is in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 13-218, 13-2018, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 12600 West 42nd Avenue from Agricultural 1 to Planned Commercial Development and for an outline development plan on second reading and that it take effect 15 days after final publication for the following reasons. One, City Council has conducted a proper public hearing in compliance with all public notice requirements as required by Section 26-109 of the Code of Laws. Two, the required rezoning has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, which has forwarded its recommendation of approval with one condition. Three, the required rezoning has been found to comply with the criteria for review in Section 26-112-E and 260-303-D of the Code of Laws with the following condition. Number one, and that should read following conditions. Number one, a minimum of 25% office space is required with warehouse or workshop primary use with office use to be determined and defined at the discretion of the Community Development Director. Item two, if the property owners initiate an NTMP application which anticipates as a potential mitigation, one or more speed humps installed on Xenon and 42nd Avenue and/or 42nd Avenue Xeon, that all related costs will be at the applicant's expense.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Mr. Fitzgerald. Is there discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dahl.
I'm not suggesting that you should change the motion in any way, but I just wanted to make note of a couple of things that at least had been raised and make sure that you either do or don't want them in the motion. On the NTMP application, the applicant has got a screen up here that had asked for that condition to be limited, that the, to the property owners asking within 24 months, I assume, after the approval of this application. Not five years from now, there's a request and I guess I understand that and that the cost should not be paid until, do they say after building completion? I suggest upon CO, sort of occupancy for the, for the building, that sort of addresses or puts some constraints on the otherwise kind of open-ended request. You'd probably approve that if the maker of the motion and the second agree, that could be placed on the motion.
I assume that that would take an amended motion, wouldn't it?
So, I think so long as the maker of the motion and the maker of the second agree that that's, that's the motion, I think that's, that's all right unless you want to debate it, in which case, fine.
Would you like to amend your motion?
I would amend the motion then to read as follows for item two of the follow, of the conditions, that the cost for implementing the speed humps installed on Xeon or 42nd Avenue would not fall on the applicant within the next 24 months and it would not be his responsibility until after the certificate of occupancy.
Understanding that 24 months would be the time during which adjacent property owners could ask for the speed humps because that's our code provision. People up and down the street can ask for a speed hop. So, I think they're trying to limit when it can be requested.
So, it would be a 24-month, up to 24 months to initiate that? Is that what you mean?
So stipulated and so agreed.
And Mr. Fitzgerald, are those, are those amendments?
I agree to that amendment.
Okay, so, we have a, we have a reconstituted motion and an amendment. Do we have discussion on the motion? Would the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries four to three with councilmembers Dozeman, Urban, and Duran voting no.
However, of course, under the charter, ordinances require for their passage five votes. And while the majority of a quorum present has voted for the motion, under our charter is very clear, ordinances for their passage require five votes, so the ordinance does not pass.
Okay, thank you. We will move to item number five. Ms. Dozeman, would you introduce item number five?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 19-2018, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 4288 Youngfield Street from neighborhood commercial to mixed-use neighborhood, case number WZ-18-12 slash Copper Forest.
This is an ordinance on first reading. A motion is in order.
Sorry. Let me get there. I move to approve Council Bill Number 19-2018, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 4288 Youngfield Street from neighborhood commercial to mixed-use neighborhood on first reading for the sole purpose of ordering it published and for a public hearing set for Monday, August 13, 2018 at 7:00 p.m. in City Council Chambers and if adopted, that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second?
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Hoppe. Would you please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item number six, Mr. Urban, would you introduce item number six?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 20-2018, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 6701 West 44th Avenue from Commercial 1 to Mixed Use Neighborhood, case number WZ-18-14 Potroski. I totally butchered that name.
Thank you. Would you please give us a motion on, on this?
Thank you. Hopefully, my motion's better than my pronunciation. I move to approve Council Bill Number 20-2018, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 6701 West 44th Avenue from Commercial 1 to Mixed Use Neighborhood on first reading for the sole purpose of ordering it to be published and for a public hearing to be set for Monday, August 13, 2018 at 7:00 p.m. in City Council Chambers and if adopted, that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item number seven, Mr. Pond, would you please introduce this item?
Potricus, that's my, that's my guess. Yes, I would. Item number seven, Resolution Number 39-2018, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement among the cities and towns of Arvada, Bomar, Edgewater, Golden, Lakewood, Littleton, Morrison, Superior, Westminster, and Wheat Ridge and the County of Jefferson providing for a collaborative transportation forum. At issue, the request for council action as described herein is for approval of an intergovernmental agreement, an IGA, between the City of Wheat Ridge and the other municipalities that I mentioned and the county for the purposes of establishing a process for requesting Federal Transportation Improvement Program or TIP funds in accordance with Dr. Cog and federal rules.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a presentation tonight?
We do. Scott Brinker, Public Works Director, will give a quick, quick presentation. Excuse me, some, some brief remarks here. Once every four years, federal funds under the Transportation Improvement Program, TIP as we call it, are dispersed into the states through the metropolitan planning organizations, in our case, Dr. Cog, the Denver Regional Council of Governments. After the last TIP cycle about four years ago, the Dr. Cog Board decided to initiate a more streamlined, better process for divvying out the funds in the metro region. Previously, there's a, there was a rating program that, that we submitted to Dr. Cog and they rated the projects and without getting into the weeds too much, the funds were dispersed based on what they called a tier one, more of a regional level of projects and then tier two, which were, which were more sub-regional. This time around, there'll be a similar rating process used, but what Dr. Cog decided to do is use the more, use the more- to do is use a more streamlined, effective process that's been used in some of the other MPOs throughout the nation that's worked more effectively, whereas the funds to the different, are allocated to different subregions, in our case, Jefferson County, and putting it, some of the decisions and priorities in the hands, more of the local municipalities, collaborating together in more of a regional approach as far as amongst the communities, which ones are really the most important to us as a region, that really have a good benefit for all. Those are more or less regional projects. Then there's also, after those are allocated, there's additional monies that go into what we call a subregional group, which are more localized, which will also compete, but also be discussed and vetted by the municipalities through what we're calling a regional transportation forum. And that's what the agreement in front of you for consideration tonight is, is allowing the mechanism, the tools for us to form this regional subgroup, which is comprised of elected officials, Dr. Cog, board members, including our mayor, Mr. Starker, who I want to acknowledge and thank for your time and efforts in helping us put this together. We've actually met several times with the other municipalities to get to this point and put together this agreement. It's been some work, but we think it's going to be a great process in the long run, and we've made some great strides. So with that, I'd be happy to try and answer any other questions you might have at this time.
Thank you. I'd like to add that the change from the sort of strictly regional funding of transportation projects to a regional and a subregional process gives the, is going to give the local communities more control over the design and putting forth projects that they think are really important to their communities. So there's more local control on this. And the funding, the board decided that in a funding split, 20 percent of the funds would be allocated to the regional share, and 80 percent would be to the subregional share. So even the funding allocation was very favorable to the subregion. And I've been working with Mr. Brink and Mr. Westburg and other members of our Public Works on this, and very interesting, and I think it's really going to be, at the end of the day, very beneficial to our communities. So with that, I will open it up to questions from council. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is related to the forum membership, and it defines membership by agencies, and so I'm curious as to what type of agencies would be a party to this forum, and does that exclusive to municipal agencies, or are there contemplated other types of agencies that would be a voting member of the forum?
I believe it's just municipalities. There'd been some discussion about RTD and those agencies too, but you may want to correct me on that, Mark, but I believe they have their own process they go through for theirs, although we do entertain multimodal and transit-type projects too.
Please introduce yourself.
The agencies have to be eligible to receive Dr. Cog funding to be part of the forum.
Okay.
So there are some smaller towns and stuff in our, like Edgewater and some of those other things, that typically don't get involved, but they, some of them have expressed interest in being, some others haven't. So, but it's, they've got to be, so it can't be like Bike Jeff Co. or something like that. It's got to be somebody that can receive federal funding through the...
I'm just thinking of other ones like the Denver Water or Metropolitan District, or some other type of quasi-governmental agency of some sort.
They've got to be members of Dr. Cog and eligible to receive federal funding through Dr. Cog.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions from council? Would the, I'll take a motion.
Thank you. I move to approve Resolution Number 39-2018, a resolution approving an IGA among the cities and towns of Arvada, Beaumar, Edgewater, Golden, Lakewood, Littleton, Morrison, Superior, Westminster, and Wheat Ridge, and the County of Jefferson, providing for a collaborative transportation forum.
Second?
There's a, pardon me, a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Who is the second? Ms. Duran? Would the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll move to item number eight. Ms. Hoppe, would you introduce item number eight, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 40-2018, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Edgewater regarding the 29th Avenue street improvements and the 26th Avenue drainage improvements. The city council approved a special use permit and an intergovernmental agreement with Denver Water on September 10, 2012, to allow for reconstruction of the Ashland Reservoir on property located at 2901 Fenton Street, including improvements to the adjacent streets upon completion of the reservoir construction. In conjunction with Denver Water's project, the city had planned to straighten the portion of 29th Avenue adjacent to the reservoir just west of Fenton Street. In order to simplify design and construction coordination, the city council approved an IGA amendment with Denver Water on June 12, 2017, to construct the street improvements and be reimbursed by Denver Water for their share. Thereafter, the city was approached by the city of Edgewater with a development proposal for the vacant land south of 29th Avenue between Kendall and Ingalls Street. Edgewater also desires to construct a water line between Kendall and Gray Streets. Both cities decided to coordinate the design and construction work to minimize the impact to traffic on 29th Avenue. The street plans have been completed, and the project will be advertised for bids on July 2, 2018. Construction is anticipated to commence after the August 18 Colorado Classic Bike Race.
Thank you. Mr. Westburg, do you have a presentation on this?
I do.
Please proceed.
I'm Mark Westburg, Public Works Department. So you guys have seen some of these slides before, but I just wanted to sort of go over some of the stuff we've done. We sort of talked about this during the street with council meeting just a month or so ago. The Denver Water site used to look like this. It's been that way for a very long time, and they started tearing things up and doing things, and I didn't have an updated aerial. Someday, I'll get one and have the very pretty-looking site there. But as a part of that, we're able to straighten 29th through there and remove that traffic signal at 29th and Fenton, because the reason the signal's there is because the big hill used to block the view. Edgewater came to us, as Ms. Hoppe mentioned in the council report discusses, and said, hey, we'd sort of like to go ahead and do something the rest of the way to Kendall, because we've got this development on the vacant piece of ground. That development has slowed, but they have expressed interest. They have sent some more stuff to Edgewater. They do look like they're going to maybe move forward, but Edgewater also wants to get a water line put in from Kendall Street, which is right here, over to Gray Street, which is here. And so we're working with them together on that. They just actually got the water line plans to, and we're going to put them out as an addendum with the bid package. They've got some stagnation issues with the water line that they've got that ends at Kendall Street, so they have to go out there and occasionally flush the water out, which creates problems because the slope's out there, and it just wastes water. So we're hoping that, they're hoping that this, looping this line's going to help prevent some of their stagnation issues they have. So the funding partners, we've got just over a million and a half dollars in the city budget for this year, shown right now. Denver Water's on the hook for about $400,000 of that. The IGA was approved last year. We're looking at possibly doing an amendment to that, so we may be coming back to you in August with that, but we'll, we can talk about that in a minute. Edgewater would be on the hook for about $300,000, according to our estimates, and construction costs have been a little wonky out there lately, so we'll see how this turns out. And the city would then be on the hook for about $800,000. So we're getting about a million and a half dollars' worth of street and water and other things out there for, for about half of that is city dollars. So sort of those areas of responsibility, Denver Water's on the hook for the stuff immediately around the Ashland Reservoir. 30th Avenue is going to be shrunk a little bit because it's very, very wide, with some additional streetscape added there. There are also, we're working with Denver Water right now. They kind of tore 30th Avenue up with all the construction work, so we're working with them to try to, try to get them to overlay that. We're suggesting that we can do a very short, quick amendment to the IGA, add that overlay project into ours, so we, again, just have one contractor out there from here on out doing things. Same thing with Fenton Street. Fenton Street was already in pretty bad shape. It's even in worse shape now, and so we're wanting to fix that. We're also widening Fenton Street by two feet. And then they've got that little piece of 29th and north half of 29th that are adjacent to their property that they're also doing. And the city would be on the hook for all the stuff in yellow. There's a real skinny piece of yellow on Fenton, because we are widening that by two feet, and we're going to pay for that widening. The other thing that we're doing is there's a lot of parking on the west side of Fenton Street for the Assisted Living Place Lick store, which is part of the reason why we're widening the street, so it's, it meets our street standards. About this location, where their main entrance, somewhere close to their main entrance, we're going to be adding a crosswalk with some islands that block the parking on either side a little bit, so that it's much safer for those employees that are walking back and forth to have a designated place to get back and forth. So they've, the Assisted Living Place has done some improvements on their side to try to assist that, but they're not legally done. They don't meet ADA and those kind of things, and so we're going to, we're just going to take care of that with this project since we're out there doing things anyway. And then Edgewater's going to be on the hook that's in their jurisdiction down here, plus a little bit more for the water line construction. They'll pay entirely for the water line construction through here. The other thing that's happened on this project is a part of the utilities referral is Wheat Ridge Sanitation said, hey, you know what? Our line in there is in pretty bad shape. We'd like to replace that too, so, which is why this project's been delayed almost a year. Every time we turn around, someone else wants to jump on the bandwagon and get involved, which we think is ultimately a good thing for us, because we get a lot of things done out there with just one construction project. So they're going to be replacing their sewer line, I think, I believe, from Kendall all the way to Fenton Street, through there, and trying to straighten some of it out and doing some different things to make it a little bit better. And those are included in our plans, too. So we're going to manage all the construction. Those two entities will be doing all the inspection for the two lines themselves, but then that way, we get to manage the pavement and all the stuff, and they get to save the cost of traffic control and save the cost of the repairs that they would normally have to do if they were cutting into our street. So we think this is sort of a win for all of us on this one. As was mentioned, we put this project out to bid on July 2, so it was a week ago. We've got a few questions that have come in that we're going to get addressed. We'll get the water line plans added, and we hope to come back to you on August 13 to award this contract. The bike race is on the following Saturday, so we're not going to tear 29th up during the bike race, because that would be a bad, bad thing. So we will probably, given the fact that the Labor Day holiday is very soon after that and stuff, we expect to start construction by September 10. If the contract wants to start a little earlier, we will, but we for sure won't start until at least August 20, which is when the bike race all happens. So the other thing that we're here for with Edgewater is we got to collaborating with these guys. They've got money now, because they've got, they tax the pot businesses that are in their, that are in their jurisdiction. I'm not judging, I'm just, it's the way things are. So we're actually, you know, before, we sort of approached Edgewater with some collaborative projects, and they just never had any money to pay for them. So this was a post that I believe Ms. Woodin, when she was here, alerted us to, it was posted on a Facebook site somewhere. Denver Water was doing a pretty big release up at their, I think they were draining one of the reservoirs when this was posted. And so what happens is Fenton Street, our jurisdiction's over here on this side, this is 26th Avenue, and then Fenton Street comes down, and then it continues down into Edgewater. And the water, when the water is flowing relatively slowly, not much flow, then it comes down here, it turns the corner, there's an inlet right back over here, and same thing on the east side of the street. But when the water's flowing a lot, like we get a big rainstorm, or Denver Water releases a bunch of water down Fenton Street, then it all runs across the road, and I'm going to attempt to be slick with this, and I may fail, but we'll see how this goes here. I didn't know it was going to do that to me. I got help from Lauren to pull this off, but she can only do so much because she's not here. So we'll try this one more time and see if this is going to work. It's not going to work, sorry. It's a street view across the street. I'll get out of this, it's just not coming up. So anyway, right across the street is a, is a house that, the guy's got a basement, and this water comes flowing across the street, hits the curb, and sometimes goes to the sides, but sometimes spills over and comes on into his house. So he's been complaining to the city for years about this, and now that Edgewater has money, they approached us with trying to do something to fix it. So we, one of our on-call consultants did a bunch of investigation out there for us, and we discovered some things, and most of them were not good things. And so for this IGA, sort of the area's responsibility, is we be responsible, this little tiny yellow piece up at the top, which is the part of the storm sewer system that's in our project, and then Edgewater will be responsible for this piece. So that's what we're looking at doing as far as the area's responsibility. But the proposed project, and this is a graphic that was in your council packet, and I'm going to talk about some things, we can't read the text on this, but there's an existing inlet here, an existing inlet on the east side and the west side, and then there's a pipe that runs down in Edgewater, down to this system that runs down to a mainline system that is on 25th Avenue. So as we started looking at this, this pipe here is often silted up, and so our Public Works crews have gone in and cleaned it out on a pretty regular basis. We're thinking there must be something going on downstream that's making this silt up. And so they came down this inlet in Edgewater and started, and got their rig out there, their pipe cleaning rig, and started going this way, and they hit a blockage here in the south half of 26th Avenue. So they tried several times to get through that. And what this little note here says, they pulled up a lot of stuff. They pulled up dirt and silt and asphalt, chunks of asphalt and all this kind of thing. It's never good when you find asphalt in your pipe. It's supposed to be on top of the pipe. And so they came up to our inlet and started trying to work their way south, hit the same blockage, and couldn't get through it. So we ended up, we ended up getting a video camera, and I don't have that footage, it'd be kind of fun to watch, but they ended up being able to get a video camera in there, look at it, and there's a gas line in 26th Avenue that when somebody put the gas line, they just punched, they went right through our pipe and didn't tell us, didn't repair it. So lately, somebody cut through one of our storm sewer lines with utility, and they told us, and we were very thrilled that they actually told us. So at some point, when a gas line was put in, they just punched through the pipe, and then they just backfilled around their gas line, and so that's why this pipe is clogged at that point. The pipe's very old, and then as we also continue down into Edgewater, they started looking down this way, and at this location, this pipe in Edgewater, I think from here down, is a 12-inch vitrified clay pipe. So you can imagine how old that is. And there's a lot of tree roots and other things, just like what happens in clay pipe. And then at this location, they found another gas line that appeared to have been just cut through the pipe and put across. So there seems to be a trend in this part of the world with gas lines. So the proposed project is basically replace all of this pipe from this inlet down here in Edgewater north, and Edgewater would pay for all of their piece of it, and then we'd pay for this little piece here. The other thing we're going to do up here at this end is we're going to leave the existing inlets on 26, because that is a low point on 26, is right at Fenton Street. But on Fenton Street itself, we're going to come just uphill of these, of the curb returns here, of those radius points, and we're going to add two more inlets on Fenton Street, because that way it'll catch the water coming down Fenton, at least some of the water coming down Fenton, before it gets to 26 and jumps over the street. So that's number one, we're going to get the pipes so it flows again, we think that's really important, but also to get those two extra inlets added to Fenton Street. We're still working on the design of this, and the cost sets and all those things. We'll get all that information into the 2019 budgets, you'll see a budget item, a dimension length range for this project. But that's what this IGA covers, is collaborating with Edgewater to do both this project and the 29th Avenue project.
Thank you. I didn't have anyone signed up from the public to speak on this. Is there any here that'd like to speak on this item? I will entertain questions from council. Mr. Matthews?
Those plugged pipes, if they're unplugged, do they actually have capacity to handle flow?
We'll actually increase the pipe size to 18 inches.
So you are going to...
That's our minimum, that's the...
You are going to upgrade, upgrade.
We just, it's 12 inches small. They get plugged up really quickly when people put gas lines through them and things like that, so. We'll also be using RCP, it was much harder to cut to put a gas line through, so we're hoping this is going to be a major upgrade for our system down there.
Is there any antique value in that clay pipe?
I don't know. It's got a lot of roots in it, I know, so...
Okay. Well, Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It relates to the gas lines being laid. Is there any liability on the utility provider that did that, or how do we go about?
There'd be no way for us to prove when it was done and how it was done and all those things. It's been so far back in history that it'd be great, but I suspect there's no way to do that.
Thank you.
Additional questions? I would entertain a motion, Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 40-2018, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Edgewater regarding the 29th Avenue street improvements and the 26th Avenue drainage improvements.
Second?
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Duran. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you very much. We will go to item number nine. Mr. Matthews, would you introduce this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item nine, Resolution Number 41-2018, a resolution approving a public finance agreement by and between the city of Wheat Ridge, the Longspreek Metropolitan District, and Evergreen Clear Creek Crossing LLC. And I'll just speak to the major part of the issue right now, since we've gone over this a little already. Evergreen Development Company has submitted a request for public financing to assist in the construction of public improvements for the Clear Creek Crossing mixed-use project. The proposed project is anticipated to include approximately 300 department units, 200 hotel rooms, and roughly 192,400 square feet of commercial space, which is currently anticipated to includes a number of large-format entertainment users. In addition, the project is proposed to include a 26.6-acre SLC-Lutheran medical campus. The complete build-out of the project is estimated to include over $490 million in private investment in the Wheat Ridge community.
Thank you. Mr. Pond, or not Mr. Pond, Mr. Goff, do we have a presentation on this?
I believe we provided all the information in the public hearing on the pit ordinance, so, again, our whole team is here this evening, and myself, to answer any questions.
We will entertain questions as soon as I ask. If there are, I have no one signed up to speak on this. Is there any... up to speak on this. Is there anyone in the chambers who wishes to speak? And I will open this up now for questions from council. Okay, seeing none, a motion is in order. Mr. Matthews?
I move to approve Resolution Number 41-2018, a resolution approving a public finance agreement by and between the City of Wheat Ridge, the Longs Peak Metropolitan District, and Evergreen Clear Creek Crossing LLC.
Second.
I think Ms. Dozeman got that for a second, so we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. We will move to item number 10. Mr. Urban, please introduce this item.
Bear with me for a moment while I scroll through the last item. All right. Resolution 44-2018, a resolution approving the termination of the annexation and development agreement between the City, Coors Brewing Company, and Cabela's Retail Incorporated.
Thank you. We've, you've got the issue, the detailed issue on this in your packet. I'm going to just open this up for, before I do that, is there any member of the public who would like to speak on this matter? Okay, I'm going to open this up for questions from council.
And Mr., we have representative from Longs Peak Metropolitan District here, too, if you have any questions for him.
Anybody has any questions, speak now. I will entertain a motion. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution 44-2018, a resolution approving the termination of the annexation and development agreement between the City, Coors Brewing Company, and Cabela's Retail Incorporated.
Second.
A motion made by Mr. Urban, second by Ms. Dozeman. Discussion on the motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you very much. We will go to item number 11. Ms. Duran, would you please introduce item number 11?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 45-2018, a resolution approving the termination of the 2006 intergovernmental agreement between the City and the Longs Peak Metropolitan District. Would you like me to read the issue?
You know, this, this issue is because we're moving into a new, a new development scenario with Evergreen Clear Creek Crossing LLC. This is to terminate the prior intergovernmental, the IGA with, that was in?
Yep, the IGA with the Longs Peak Metropolitan District that was in reference to the Cabela's project. So very similar to the other terminations you've considered this evening.
This is sort of an alignment issue. I will ask if anyone from the public is here that wishes to speak on this. I see none. And Mr. Carlson, please come back to the podium and just introduce yourself again for the record.
The Gun, Tyler Carlson, managing partner, Evergreen Development. But assuming the sale, I just want to publicly thank you all for having the confidence in our team to execute this project. This is no small matter. Everything you're approving tonight, and it's the result of literally years of work with staff. And we take our fiduciary to you as a governing body and the citizens of Wheat Ridge very seriously, and we view it as a stewardship over this piece of property that we've been blessed to acquire and look forward to executing the vision that we've been working on together. So I thought it would not be appropriate to sit here and let you vote yes to all these things without expressing my gratitude. This is something that we love doing. We have a passion for development, and we do very intentionally, and we intend to do that here. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. We'll see how the council feels about this, this resolution. Is there any, any, a motion is in order, Ms. Duran?
Thank you. I move to approve Resolution Number 45-2018, a resolution approving the termination of the 2006 intergovernmental agreement between the City and Longs Peak Metropolitan District.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Duran, a second by Ms. Hoppe. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Carlson. I think you got around the bases. We will go to item number 12. Ms. Dozeman, would you introduce item number 12 for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve appointments to the 2019 Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Update Steering Committee.
Why don't you, you want to read a little bit on the issue?
Yeah.
This is not part of Clear Creek Crossing.
So City Council has identified an update to the 2005 Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy, also known as the NRS, as a major priority in the current strategic plan. The 2005 NRS represented a community conversation and consensus about the city's competitiveness and what to do about it. Staff negotiated a scope of work with CSB, CZB LLC for a process that will include an extensive public outreach effort to determine how does the city make the most of the assets it has resurrected, nurtured, invested in, grown, and must now optimize, and to answer the question, what does the city want to be in the coming decades?
Thank you. Ms. Goff, any, any comments on this?
Just that we went through an application process, and we received 21 applications from eager residents who were very excited about being on this committee. So at our study session last week, City Council consensus was at that time to, to appoint the whole committee. And we met most of the parameters that our consultants recommended, and I think we have a really good slate of citizens that will make this very fun.
Very good. I'm really excited about this process. Is there any, I will open this up to public comment. Any citizens in the chambers tonight that'd like to speak on this? I don't see anyone coming forward. I will open it up for questions from council. A motion would be in order.
I move to approve the appointments of the entire slate of applicants on the attached NRS steering committee applications matrix.
Second.
Going to go to Mr. Matthews on this one. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion? Please poll the council. Oh, wait a minute. I do have a comment then.
I could have waited to that. I just wanted to obviously thank everyone who participated and thank council for obviously, over the course of the last year, being open to, to keep this topic on the table and, and to be as robust as we've been in our outreach and to be willing to empanel all, all 27 applicants. I think it's, I think this is going to be great for us. I think all of these, you know, folks being engaged and helping and becoming messengers and communicators and, and advisors to us, I think is going to be really, really important. So I just wanted to, I know there's been a tremendous amount of work on this, and this is again, maybe just the beginning of all the work to come, but thank you for everyone who has participated.
Thank you. And I would like to thank also the, the citizens that have stepped forward to volunteer for this, this steering committee. And, you know, more importantly, I want to, I want to really hope that this is an opportunity for all, for all of our citizens and residents of Wheat Ridge to come together and discuss a lot of the issues that are, that are going on in our community and where we want to be in the future. So we have folks that come to council and ask us to, to discuss a variety of issues, and I hope this is a forum that that can take place in. So would the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero. And I just wanted to say to council that I will memorialize the names of the applicants and include them in the minutes.
Thank you very much. That concludes our business portion of our meeting. I would like to get to the right page and go to City Managers Matters.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just very quickly, we provided an update to City Council, I think several months ago, about our 2E ballot question and the 2E bond funds. We have a full year of revenues that came in in 2017, and there are some Tabor restrictions on how much revenues you can generate the first year. Our ballot question said that we estimated we would generate about $3.7 million, and we went over about $470,000, I think. Majority of that was because of the hailstorm and the additional revenues that we didn't anticipate. So we've been discussing internally with, with tax experts and Tabor experts and Mr. Dahl, and we are going to ask for an executive session on July 23rd to provide you some legal advice on what the options are for that. So just wanted to give you a heads-up about that.
Thank you.
I have a question. Do you anticipate that there would be a ballot issue?
Thank you for asking that. I need to talk to you, yes.
The county has already asked me, and I have said no. So maybe we need to change that.
That is an option, about taking a ballot question to the voters this November. So I think we need to tell the county that we may. And I know, I think there's another discussion item that a couple council members want to talk about, a potential other ballot question, too, so.
Mr. Dahl?
I have one item. The City Treasurer and I have been talking about interest earned on escrow accounts that the city maintains. The city holds money for a number of things. Landscaping projects, we hold money for, for work in the public ways, we hold a little money for, in the BDC, Business Development Zone, as escrow funds on behalf of others. And over time, we need to return those monies to those, to those people that they're deposited with. On landscaping, it'll be a security, for example, for installation of landscaping. That money goes out as, as interest. The City Treasurer, as you know, is actually very keen on and diligent about making certain that the city's funds, all of its funds, work for the city, and so that, that money does gain interest. These are not large amounts, and there are a number of them. And the City Treasurer has asked me to review whether or not there's an obligation for the city when it returns the, the principal amount to also figure out how much interest. And obviously, we don't put them all each in a separate account. That's, you can't, you simply can't do that. So there is some money that's earned, and I've done the research and concluded, no, the city's not obliged to return those funds with interest, even though the city got the benefit while it was deposited. Keeping track of those escrow funds and making certain that they're held and then, gosh, did the project get paid for, that all takes time and effort and expense. So the city actually has cost in maintaining those funds. And my recommendation to the Treasurer is that the city can retain these funds, the interest on these funds, and that may well not even fully recompense the city for the amount of staff time and expense necessary to maintain these, these funds and keep track of them. So with that in mind, what the City Treasurer and I are asking for is a consensus to bring forward an ordinance that would memorialize that in our code. I've looked through the code. It's really silent. We require escrows. It doesn't say anything about interest. I think it's fair for the City Treasurer to, to have a basis for keeping the interest or not, and that really ought to be in the code. And so that's easily done. He and I felt it, other than me describing it to you tonight, it wouldn't require a, a study session, because I've told you everything that, that I would tell you in a study session. If you're inclined to have this ordinance in front of you on first reading, and we can more fully debate it, and we can have the Treasurer here, he might be able to provide you with some numbers. If that's the case, a consensus to direct that it be brought forward as an ordinance would be appreciated. Be happy to answer questions.
Do you have questions for Mr. Dahl? Do we have a consensus for Mr. Dahl to move forward? It looks like we do. Mr. Dahl, please proceed.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Ms. Shaver?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go to elected officials. Start with Ms. Duran.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Matthews?
Not tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Hoppe?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Dozeman?
Ms. Duran and I have spoken about having the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority and/or discussing affordable housing options on a study session, so I just wanted to get that on the record. Thank you.
Yes, and I do support that, having that conversation.
Mr. Fitzgerald, we will work, work that into our schedule.
It's on the rec, it's already on the list.
Thank you so much. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to commend the Wheat Ridge Police Department and their response time relative to several fireworks complaints that both myself and others made over the holidays. So appreciate their response and their willingness to deal with those issues. And again, there is a fire ban in place.
Thank you so much. Mr. Pond?
Yeah, I'm going to take just a minute, and I perhaps should have done it when Mr. Carlson was, was still, still around, but hopefully have a chance to, to hear this. A lot of work happened tonight, seemingly, very quickly. And I just want to state, since I've been, I was in this room when we were discussing this several years ago in, in different contexts. And although it seemed to be very brief and quick tonight, there was a tremendous amount of work at the staff level, the development and their developer and their partners, a whole bunch of other agencies, and this, you know, this body along the way. And so if anyone just tuned in tonight for the first time, it's probably seemed pretty abrupt. That's certainly not, I'm sure how it, how it has felt for many of the people who have labored and fought for this. As being in my district, I just want to, to acknowledge that and thank everyone. This has been an important space, not only for the city, but, but certainly for the west side of Tana and for District 3. I want to thank staff and all the work that's happened to keep this thing on, going and on the rails. I want to thank our, our partners, you know, for the work that they've put in to date and all the work that they, I expect that they're going to be putting in as a committed partner in the future. So I'm, I'm excited. I hope other people are to move forward and to develop something successful at Clear Creek.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald?
I would just add to that that Evergreen Development and Tucker Carlson have been great partners in this process, and they've been amenable to the needs of the city as we've gone through this.
Thank you. And I want to thank the Clark, the Clark boys for coming tonight and talking about 4H. I think it's a great program, and I, I hope that council, either as a council body or individually, were able to provide some support for them. I think it's a great program, and certainly a couple of fine young men to come and introduce that for us. With that, I wish everyone a nice good evening, and this meeting is adjourned.